Let's get this part.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah, I talked with Steve. This is the third time since we were here.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah.
Okay, low tech start.
Oh, there we are.
Do you have a flash drive or anything?
No, I just had the.
Stuff again, they have it packed.
Still do it.
Yep, we went low tech. Low tech this year.
Okay, no problem, yeah.
I'll call to order the county board meeting, Benton County.
Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that loud enough?
Wow.
Woo.
All right, Beth, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen? Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Excused.
Commissioner Gepinski? Commissioner Pop?
Here.
All right, Monty, do we got any additions to the agenda?
We have no changes.
Board, do we have any changes here? What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second. I got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Announcements, the county board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so the viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public staff, however, pub- uh, publics, public comment are generally reserved for the open forum segment of the public hearings. However, public comment on the, on other agenda items may be allowed at discretion of the county board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn your cell phones to vibrate, thank you. All right, Monty, anybody for open forum?
I'll check, just a second.
Okay. All right, board, we got the consent agenda, items one through three. What are the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second for approval, all in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Carries. All right. Brian Folden, county assessor.
I don't see Brian here, is he on his way? He's on his way, uh.
Do we want to move into the Great River?
You can definitely do that, absolutely right, so Karen is here and ready to go.
Why don't we move into that? Karen, thank you for coming.
Good morning, thank you for having me on the agenda today. I'm Karen Punzak, I'm the executive director for Great River Regional Library. I sent over a copy of our annual report, which is in your packet, and I just wanted to highlight some of the activities that happened at Great River in the past year. So Great River, as you know, is a six-county library system, we have libraries in thirty-two communities, and then we also have the GRRL to-go locker system out in Sartell. So last year, if you look on page two, you can see we ended up putting a new locker system in, that's that second picture there. We had actually signed a new lease agreement with the city of Sartell for a six-year project, and that lease agreement will allow us to have that locker system there through that full term. The manufacturer is Biblioteca, and they had decided that this, the previous locker system was actually old technology, so we had to replace it, and then we moved into this lease arrangement rather than having a capital investment in the equipment, it seemed like a better long-term solution. So that was a pretty big project last year. The other really big one is the top of the page there, the fines-free effort, was something that we tried a year ago, and it was extremely successful in ways we hadn't really anticipated. This was part of our strategic plan, it was under our access priority and a diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative to make the library more accessible to more people. We have a lot of people who have reasons why they can't get back to the library in exactly one week or three weeks, and we decided to remove that as a barrier to access. What happened is, is we thought we would actually lose a significant revenue stream, but with COVID, we had seen that that might not be true. What we found out is, a lot of that revenue stream was actually copy revenue and lost materials, so we actually collected more than we had anticipated, which was good from a budget standpoint, but in terms of an access standpoint, it also made those across-the-deck interactions so much easier and more streamlined, people don't have to worry about coming back exactly on the day, that's been huge for people. And then the other thing internally is we found it streamlined a lot of processes, so we were able to remove all our payment card access terminals and the maintenance on that. We no longer issue refunds because there aren't those high balances to refund if somebody brings something back. And so it's been a big switch in how we actually work across the desk, and we've seen a lot of efficiencies from it, so we've been really happy with that initiative. Um, the other really huge initiative was the expansion of Wi-Fi to go. You may remember me coming a couple of years ago talking about how we're going to test this with this new funding stream. We have now expanded it to three hundred hotspots across the region. Each library has a set of lucky-day Wi-Fi to-go hotspots, so if you go to the library, if it's on the shelf, you get to check it out, and that's a one-week checkout. If it is a holds-only Wi-Fi, you can put your, your name on the list and it eventually will show up, and you can check that out for three weeks. Most of them are out most of the time, so it's just a real demonstration of how broadband access is still a high need across the entire region. And we've been really, um, it's been a lot of work to get that project expanded to that point, you may remember it started out with five hotspots in Pierce back in like twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen. So to move that into a, such a large-scale project took some time, but we have some really great staff who've made that possible, and patrons who provided feedback to help us figure out what to do next. The other things I wanted to point out is last year was a banner year for new library card registrations, we had eighteen thousand people sign up for a new library card, so we're definitely back on track to regaining people back to the library post-COVID. And then it was also a record year for summer reading program, we had over twelve thousand kids across the region participate in summer reading program, we expect those numbers to continue to grow. Uh, the board, in its wisdom, decided that access was a big priority in twenty-twenty-two, so we added open hours in twenty-seven libraries across the region. Thanks to most of the existing staff, we were able to do that, we didn't actually hire positions, we asked people to pick up hours and work it into their personal schedules. With so many part-time workers, that's talking about a lot of people deciding whether or not they can make an adjustment, not just to their library schedule, but to their personal life in order to offer that, and it's been really well-received. So we're, we're glad to be able to offer a more consistent open hour schedule and more days open in some of our smaller libraries. Here in Foley, we had a big carpeting project happen in November, and if you haven't been there yet, it's very much refreshed and they moved some stuff around, so it's a nicer-looking space, thanks to the city of Foley for continuing to maintain that space. And then we also have been able to offer some really neat programs across the region, not just for summer reading program, but, um, here in Foley, we had the skateboarding art workshop through our legacy funding. Mark Rivard, who's a famous, famous-ish, uh, local artist, came in and offered a workshop to teens to decorate their skateboards, they were very intrigued with the idea of doing it. It was one of those things where if you can get teens to show up and be excited about something, we're feeling very successful. So we're offering those types of programs through our state funding through legacy this year, and we hope to continue that. At the legislature, we were just up at the Capitol last week, talking about some of the big initiatives down there. We're asking again for an increase in the stabilization of the state library funding formula, we are asking for legacy reappropriation, so we have to ask for that every two years, we're in the second year of the biennium. And then with the bonding bill not passing last year, we're going to ask again to have that library improvement grant fund reestablished so that there's more libraries across the whole state, um, who can improve their buildings or build new construction. We've had, I think here in Foley, they even used that fund to put in a handicap button a few years back, so it's just one of those really nimble funds that works with the city funding and the state funding to make libraries better. So I just wanted to thank Commissioner Pop for serving as chair on our board, and if you know George Fiedler, who works here in Benton County, he's also a Stearns County representative on our board, so we're really grateful to have great leadership at the board level and are really proud of the work that we've been able to do to deliver library services in whatever form that people need across the entire region. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that people have. Thank you.
You might want to, um, point out that we had one city that built a new library and one that's in the process, or?
Right, the library improvement grant fund, um, most recently, the Kimball project, was actually funded through that, that piece of legislation, and that was a matching grant, so locally, Kimball had to raise half of the money, and they did, and that was mostly through donations. So, you know, even small cities are able to participate, Howard Lake received the grant, um, in the prior grant cycle, they're in the process of bidding out their building. One of the challenges is the, the length of time, you have to be shovel-ready to apply for the grant, but their shovel-ready time was before all the construction costs went up, so this is the second time they're going out for bid. Fingers crossed, it, it's going to be a fantastic facility because it's not just a library, it's going to be a community center with a splash pad, like, it's going to be really the, the star of Howard Lake when this is all done. And I'm hopeful, because Kimball had the same thing happen, when they went out for bid, it was, you know, partly timing, and when you put the bids out there and when construction firms are ready to, to bite on a project like that, so we're hopeful.
Karen, what, what does a, um, a facility like that run these days for a library, like Kimball?
Kimball, I think, was a one-point-two-million-dollar project. Uh, I, I think the grant initially was four-hundred-and-forty thousand, one of the biggest challenges with the, the state funding is you are held to the B-three guidelines, and so one of the pieces in Kimball, that was a challenge, the guidelines require you to have renewable energy on-site, so they had to figure out how to put solar panels on that library. Um, Howard Lake is doing the same thing, and one of the next steps is if something doesn't happen right with this bid, they, they may try to take the solar panels, like, off the roof so that you don't have to have so much in the trusses to hold it up, but they're hopeful.
Nice.
Yeah.
I, I love the idea about putting the splash pads and everything, you know, in conjunction, what, do you know how many users might be in that Kimball area for that library?
I would say borrower numbers, you know, it, it's like how many people are registered, and then how many people actually use it, you know, it's two different numbers. There, there are under a thousand users, um, registered to that facility, but not everybody who comes into the library actually has a card, you know, you come to Storytime, that doesn't mean every kid's got a card, or if you come in to print, you don't need to have a card anymore to print, so, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, Eagle Bend's got a project, they aren't even using that library improvement grant fund, they're doing that slow and local, and, um, we're hopeful that they're going to be able to basically double the size of that facility, it's shared with the museum right now, and, like, the walls are up, so it's just a matter of, you know, when they can get all the things done, and that's, that's been probably a five-year project, but these small cities, they really value those library services and they're willing to support it.
And Eagle Bend's a small community.
Yeah, super tiny. But there's not a lot around there, if they have a Dollar General, why wouldn't you want a library, you know?
Any other questions from board?
No.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pop, for being on that board and being the chair.
How long you been on that board, sir?
Uh.
Quite a while, right?
Five years, maybe?
At least.
I was gonna say, yeah.
It was before the pandemic.
Yeah. Just barely, I think. I took Commissioner Berkeley's place, and he's been gone for two years, three.
Well, you were on, it's, this is my fifth year, so you were on it ever since then.
Probably five years.
All right. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we'll step back to Brian Folden, county assessor.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Sorry for the delay.
Don't worry.
Um, so I just wanted to, uh, thank Benton County, the commissioners, and the administration for recognizing employees who provide great service, not only to the taxpayers of Benton County, but also to fellow coworkers. So my nomination of the Recorder's Office staff, Cheryl, Katie, and Betty, was from December eighth. The Recorder's Office staff covered the Assessor's Office calls and walk-ins that allowed my office, um, a two-hour time period where we went to an off-site, um, all-staff meeting, so, uh, I really appreciate them covering our office. Cheryl, Katie, and Betty are always willing to help out both internal and external customers, their willingness to help another department is much appreciated, and they are a great asset to Benton County. Cheryl, Katie, and Betty went above and beyond to make sure that the Assessor's Office was staffed and available to the public, so their willingness to help, help out provides a positive impact on the customers and continued to receive service effectively during this time. Although this nomination was for a specific event, um, I will say that Cheryl, Betty, and Katie have always offered, since I've been here, to assist our office in any way that they can, so it is much appreciated, and, um, you know, so I thank them.
Thank you. Are they here, or?
No, they're not, they're not in the room, no.
I think they're modest.
They're modest.
Really appreciate it.
Camera shot. Thank you, it's, it's nice having people step in and help out, because it, it's hard when nobody's there to do your job and you got to step out and do, uh, meetings and.
Absolutely, and, and you know, and we have a small office of, of five, and, and, you know, being able to take the entire office to an off-site, uh, meeting, um, you know, builds great teamwork in our office as well, and I mean, I, I don't know that that's been done in the past, but I just think it's important to kind of build that in our office as well, so, um, you know, they get recognized for, for stepping up and helping us out, but I think our office, you know, had a great team-building exercise as well, so.
Thank you for recognizing.
Thank you, and I think it builds, it comes from leadership on down, that's all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, mine.
All right, next, Troy Heck, appointment of emergency management deputy director. Sheriff, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you, and you?
Good.
So we have before you an item for our emergency management efforts, so I will turn it over to our local expert, our emergency manager, Kristin Jeter.
I don't know that's quite go that far. Like, morning commissioners, thank you for having us, I am requesting the appointment of a deputy director, Sheriff Troy Heck, uh, of emergency management, as per Minnesota state statute.
Simple and easy, right?
Pretty easy.
Easy, I guess, my question was, did we have one prior to this?
We did, yep, uh, it was Assistant Chief Larry Nadel from Foley Fire.
All right.
He's retired now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well.
What's the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion to appoint Sheriff Troy Heck as deputy emergency management director, per Minnesota state statute, twelve-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Any updates?
Congratulations.
That's right, congratulations, Sheriff.
Are we looking at any kind of a flood situation?
Little Rock Lake.
No comment, touch base with me after the meeting. We are, um, at slightly above, uh, normal levels for the potential of flooding. The last flood outlook for the year is going to come out this Thursday, so, um, after Thursday, I will know more, but with the impending storm this week, I would say things are not shaping up to be a spectacular situation. By any stretch.
Very good wording.
Yeah.
So, keep your fingers crossed, um, but I, I would not rule out, um, any flooding throughout the county.
And I understand you're going to be at the annual meeting in Watab to give them an update?
I am, yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, congratulations, Sheriff. All right, next, Roxanne.
Oh, Sahara.
Oh, Sierra, you're going to take care of this?
Yeah, Roxanne is out today.
All right. We got the two-thousand-twenty-three solid waste facility license for waste management, Republic Services, Minden Transfer Station, Hinkameyer Landfill Incorporated, and Sand Hill Organics, doing business Tri-County Organics LLC, Tom Kramer included, Incorporated, doing business as Eastside Transfer and Recycling. Before we open the public hearing, we will hear from county staff.
Okay, so all five facilities are currently permitted and in good standing with the MPCA, none of them are proposing any changes from last year's license. I went out and inspected all five, they are all looking like they're in compliance with the Benton County ordinance. Per ordinance, the county board will set the bonding and insurance requirements and contribution amounts to a test well and closure contingency fund. We have only asked the funding of Hinkameyer Landfill, but they have now paid the statutory maximum and can no longer be required to pay into that fund. Currently, the bond is set at ten thousand dollars and insurance minimum liability is at one-point-five million. No facilities are paying into the test well contingency fund currently, staff is not requesting any changes. In summary, we are requesting two motions, the first is to have the board set bonding, insurance, and contingency fund requirements, and the second is to direct the chair to sign the attached facility licenses. If you have any questions, I will try my best to answer them.
Board, is there any questions?
This hasn't changed, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this hasn't changed over the last few years for the bonding and the insurance, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? If not, we will open the public hearing, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to address this matter, if, if so, please come to the podium, put, uh, state your name, address, and, uh, um, you can have the floor. Okay, second call, anybody? Online, anybody? All right, three times a charm, if not, I, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to set the bond at ten thou- sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, you can always.
I'm just going to do a reminder, because it's ten thousand for the bond and one-point-five million.
Correct. I was going to include that in my motion, so that's going to be my motion, set the bond at ten thousand and, uh, insurance at one-point-five mil.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're not done.
We're not done, we got to make the second motion, is to, I make a motion to direct the chair and the administrative side to attach facility license.
Thank you.
Licenses.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Lloydalt, engineers report.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, commissioners. Um, just saw a number of updates for you, uh, main insight, snowplows are out again yesterday with the snow at four AM, um, they're gearing up for another snowfall coming our way, so, very busy year with, uh, with snowfall, so, and snow plowing, remo- snow removal. Uh, good update, we heard back from the H-SIP application for the roundabout at Mayhew Lake Road, Casat One and Twenty-Nine, and we did receive seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for that roundabout. So that is good news, that is money in twenty-twenty-five.
No, no, twenty-twenty-five.
Yep, twenty-twenty-five, yep.
It's, okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
The latest one is twenty-twenty-four that we're putting.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yeah, that was the Wednesday meeting, yeah, with Chris. Um, we did submit the raise grant last Tuesday, so that's all been taken care of, and just patiently wait the outcome of that, um, so I'd like to thank everyone on their work, all the staff and commissioners, uh, for work that went into that. I never gave the S update, we did not receive any APO money for the Casat Three, uh, uh, project, um, from Mayhew Lake Road to the APO boundary, um, but so far, we are two out of three of the ones that we've heard back from the grants this year, receiving the Casat Two, uh, funding, we're waiting to hear back from the raise, and then we're, we're waiting to hear back from two bridges for federal money. Um, so so far, two-point-seven-five million, or, yeah, two fi- two, two-point-seven-five million this year of outside of, of federal money. Another update, uh, it sounds like the bonding bill passed the House last night, um, I think the numbers I had yesterday was seventy-nine million for local road improvement fund and sixty-seven million for the local bridge replacement program, all this local bridge replacement program, we've have received money in the past, a lot of the smaller called box culverts, uh, such as County Road Fifty-One, Fifty, County Road Eighty, them are all ones that we received from, from that source of funding. So, um, we'll see what happens, um, with that. Do we want to give an update, or Chris kind of, Chris is, he wasn't able to give an update on the bonding side of things, but, uh, um, he had sent an email yesterday that he had spoke to the Office of Minister of Management, um, and, uh, a little more details on that, um, that essentially any recipients of any bonding would have four years to, from the date of enactment, to encumber the funds. It sounds like the state likes to be the last dollar in when it deals with these fundings, so that's, I think, why one of our representatives has been, uh, keen on us seeking outside funding for some of our, you know, for our projects that we've been going after with Mayhew Lake Road and then the Future Twenty-Nine Corridor. So with that, uh, there, I mean, it's, there's a, there's a draft, I think, and there was in there, this was the email he sent yesterday, um, so he just said that, um, you know, we may, you know, we, talking about funding, I think our resolution, um, yeah, our first draft of the bill is like eighteen million, our resolution says nineteen million, he was recommending that we proceed with that nineteen million for Mayhew Lake Road and then that thirteen-point-eight million on, uh, the future extension of Twenty-Nine.
Mark, on that future extension, that thirteen million, I think that was going all the way.
All the way, correct.
And I think what we really need to do is, if from my standpoint, I think we need to narrow that down, that first section, and keep that in that five-million range, just for the fact that, I think, I think it's a hope and a dream right now, that.
Talk about the thirteen million was going from point to, we're point eight.
So the Twenty-Nine Roundabout?
Yeah.
That we just got the H-SIP grant, all the way to Three, around the high school, and then redoing some roads going to, like, towards Rawleys.
I don't think we ever really intended for that.
Oh, that was, that was in the.
Yeah, projects, some of it, uh, but we didn't have to do it because we've already did overlays and everything. Correct.
Correct, yeah, that one was overlaid within my time with the county, I want to say twenty-seventeen or twenty-eighteen, that last portion, County Road Eighty, which, actually, we, we took that one over from Minden Township and gave it, gave, uh, two miles of road to them.
If we do that chunk around, uh, the high school, then we can say the, the belt line in Benton County is complete, it's not perfect, but it's there.
Can we go back to the, um, the Mayhew Lake Corridor? I know we're seeking the rage grant, but apparently there's about a four to five-billion-dollar match required for that. So I'm wondering, should we, as we're seeking bonding, seek the, seek funding for the local match rather than a dollar amount, essentially, which is most of the project?
And that.
We're duplicating a bit there between bonding and, and, uh, raise, so.
Yeah, I think Chris's recommendation was to go for the nineteen, and then there's the opportunity, I mean, the thought is that we, they may come back and ask us, will you, are you willing to accept less or lesser amount, um, at that point?
I, I think we have to have a little further in-depth conversation about that, but first of, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank Mark, you, and Christine, and Monty. First of all, I wanna thank Mark, you, and Christine, and Monte. I know I put a lot of pressure on you guys to get the Sam Dove Gotten number. It was very important to me that we got that done, so thank you. I know both you guys were on vacation. Of course, Monte was through the duration, so I appreciate what you guys all did to get that taken care of. I really do. Uh, second of all, uh, I, I agree with you, Monte, about that bonding and everything. But we've done everything that Adriscow and Senator Howe, uh, said for us to do. So I, and that's why they wanna throw this into that bill, I believe, now. But I think we go, we go for what we can.
I, I think you, you shoot for the, the moon and hope. I mean, cause from, from what WSB is saying right now is, if there's ever a year, it's this year. And now they're talking about a second bonding bill still coming out. And I think after this, you're gonna see the, everything dry up.
Yeah, it's gonna dry up real quick.
So forge ahead, uh, and, and try to get full funding through, through bonding?
Well, for the, from my standpoint, I think we gotta have a little bit more talk on this.
Okay.
But we, we don't have a lot of time. It's, it's gotta be today, because it's got that, the, the next grant has gotta be in by the end of the week.
So it sounds like we should arrange a, a call with Mr. Bird?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what he was, I think what Chris's email was saying is, the thirteen million, go for that on this. And then if we, if they come back to us and say, oh, we wanna, what, what, what would you be willing to take? If we can't do the thirteen million, then we resort back to, uh, we can take the, the other seven hundred grand for the H-SIP grant, you know, the, our money down on that and maybe one little leg of the, the road.
Well, I thought Chris was gonna throw a million dollar in through Amer and that.
He did.
Okay.
But this is the same thing.
Same thing, okay, so it'll be a second portion of it?
Yeah, and then I said to, at one point, you know, if we did accept, you know, if we got less, we could do, yeah, like I said, Commissioner. Kapinski was to do a segment of it, for example, in front of the high school from Twenty-Nine to Three.
Correct.
Um, instead of doing the whole corridor of Mayhew Lake.
Yep, no, I, I agree with that.
When, when will we know on the raise grant?
September.
It's August, September.
Yeah, you would know more, Mark.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, it's, I think it's midsummer, I think, or late summer, I wanna say. I can't remember. I saw it the other day when I was working on it, uh, last week, but I can't remember now off the top of my head.
These, these projects really go hand in hand. I mean, this whole, and, and that was, that was one of the things that I think we need to do in this next grant is explain to everybody that, yes, we got, we got one from Twenty-Nine to, to Twenty-Three. But we've got the Twenty-Nine Extension, which hits one at a very crucial intersection that, that directs truck traffic around the school. This is one project. It's a lot of money. That's why we're going for multiple areas, what, like we were told by legislators. Hit every pot that we possibly can for money. And, and we just gotta tell the story so people aren't confused that we're trying to double up here and double up there. We just gotta make a very, very quick introduction that, this is one project. We're breaking it out in sections already. We're not greedy, we'll take whatever we can get. So we just gotta tell that story.
Um, you guys been working on the raise grant. Is that a, like, an all or none, or is there, can they come back and say, instead of nineteen million, we're gonna give you ten million?
So that's a good question. During my research, I didn't get that out of it. I thought it was either all or nothing. Mark, do you remember?
I think so. I mean, there's potential they could come back and say a certain portion. Um, and we could enter that conversation, I guess, at that time. Um, but I, my understanding, I think most of them that got funded, they got funded fully. I would say if we only got partially funded, probably be because we're one of the last ones, you know, just above that line of getting funded or not.
Okay.
There's only, I think, so much money in that. I mean, there's a lot of money in it, um, but again, there's obviously a cap.
It's a big country, too.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the good thing is we had a lot of federal support. We got Tina Smith on board. We got Amy Clumbersh, Clubbershaw. I'm sorry, Senator Clubbershaw, Senator Smith on board, you know.
And then Representative Emmer.
Yep, on board too, to sign off on all of this, so that was great.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a good feeling and thank, thank the staff for getting all this done. Uh, uh, an extra thank you all to Mary and the WSB folks, because they, they worked tirelessly on this to get, to get it done. There was a few, uh, few scares along the way, so, uh, but, but at the end of, end of the day, the staff got together and got it figured out and got it submitted, and we thank everybody.
Yeah, that was exciting. We, Mary and Connor, uh, we were on a Teams call when I hit the button, submit, and they're like, that's it, you know, and submit it and receive, so, um, that was, uh, it was really good, so.
Well, and, and just to, I don't wanna keep talking on this, but this is such a big project for the county. I mean, this is, this is ginormous when it comes to, um, development and traffic flow and school district and, you know, tax capacity. There, there's so many things that hit this and and, uh, wanna, I'll never forget this, one of the things that Commissioner Persky from Stearns County said, when he seen the, uh, the, um, outlay and what the economics were on this project. He couldn't, he couldn't believe the size of developments that could happen out this way. It, it was astounding to him to, to see that there, the potential there. So, it's kinda one of these where you build it, they will come, and that's where we're at.
Well, the, the good thing is we got APO support and we got Stearns County support too.
Yep.
And everybody around the area for this project.
All the legislators.
Yeah.
So.
It's just a wait and see, huh?
Now it's a wait and see, and then, you know.
Cross our fingers.
Yep.
And then make Monte nervous when we get it, or if we get it.
You know, at, at the others, on the other side, though, we've got other partners with the City of Sucker Rapids and the school district, the townships. I mean, we've, we've got partners built across the board on the, this has been a year-long process, really, a year, year and a half long process, so.
Financial support, financial partners?
I, I think everybody's gonna be a financial partner, whether they know it or not, you know.
Time, time will tell.
Yeah. It's, uh.
Pretty tough to get school districts to be a financial partner.
Let's, let's just get the grant first and we'll.
They joined in on this, uh, on this study because of all the accidents, so I, I, I think we got some good partners. We just gotta we, step one is getting the grant, and then step two is figuring out where we go and how we get it accomplished.
To, just to wrap, do we have, do we have clear direction to Mr. Bird then, or do we need additional discussion, uh, uh, today sometime?
I think we should just get together real quick and.
Okay, see if we can get him on, on a virtual, okay.
Yep. Just so we're on the same page and we don't submit something that, it doesn't make sense.
Of course, yeah, all right. I'll be in touch with them soon, yeah.
Mark, you'll join too, right?
Yeah, yep. And, uh, we did submit one million to, uh, for earmarks to, uh, Representative Emmer's last, uh, last week Chris did, so, um, so that's kinda update on, uh, the bonding and funding and, and, uh, um, all the things they're applying for.
Mi- Mr. Chair, Mark, I, I know there was an email sent out with conversations about you, about the roundabout, the Twenty-Nine Corridor Roundabout, that you talked about cement instead of, uh, bituminous?
Yep.
Rationality, reasonings?
Well, if you look at the pre, our roundabout there, actually, where Lake Station's the one and, and Three. You can find the pavement, it's pulling apart. I mean, that's not that old of pavement. So you have those turning movements and on those seams. Um, I would be a proponent, and me and Chris had talked to before he had left about maybe doing concrete. The only downfall of concrete is it's more money, but it's gonna have a lot, a lot longer life cycle and less maintenance along the way. Uh, the difficulty with those roundabouts is, is traffic movement through that intersection. So you're gonna have it closed for the roundabout already, um, why not pave it? But that does add additional cost to do a, a concrete roundabout.
Mr. Chair, so when you do a concrete roundabout there, would you do, uh, bituminous first and then concrete on top?
Yeah, the roundabout itself would be concrete, the approaches leading into.
No, no, I meant on where you put the concrete, because, you know, the, the myth is that bituminous decays from the top down, concrete decays from the bottom up. So if you put, you know, a three-inch deal of bituminous and then your concrete, you're gonna extend that life drastically.
Yeah, you could do that, and it'd be more cost.
Little more cost, but when you take the life of that roundabout, and that'll be a heavily used roundabout, I think it'd be worth your time to look at that.
Yeah, so I think right now they're estimating, uh, like a standalone project, I think, a bituminous roundabout, it's a good one point five million. A concrete's probably closer to two million.
So, what's the depth of the concrete then that you put in there?
You know, I'd have to look that up. I don't, I actually haven't dealt with a lot of concrete in the past, but I know a number of other counties are switching to doing concrete instead of bituminous.
In the roundabouts?
Yeah, in the roundabouts, correct. And, again, kinda the same, the same issue that we're running and.
You're kinda, you kinda said it, it's, you know, it's the shifting that.
The one thing I'll notice, or I'll say is, the, the, until you're made aware of issues like this, you don't pay attention to it. You just think it's breaking up. Today, we had the opportunity to drive through there, and it's like, oh. What's weird is, when, it seems like when people are coming out of the roundabout, it's great where it's tearing up, so.
Yeah, and it might be too, you know, uh, construct, on construction end of things.
Yep.
Um, usually use a, there, there's a higher grade oil, which is good for more heavier traffic. The only downfall of it is constructability. It's really hard to, uh, place compact and get it, uh, and get it in place. I remember when they were paving the three up the hill roundabouts and the difficulties the paving contractor was having with that oil in the mix. So, yeah.
Well, it's exciting.
It is.
We got one grant, take care of one issue.
Brick by brick.
Yeah.
Seven hundred fifty, though, come close to two mil.
No, no. But we did, we did, the reason we put in for that other million was for the county's portion.
You know, Commissioner Pop, we're doing a lot in Rice anyway, and you're here.
But you guys got sand.
Yeah. Yeah, there we got roads that are paved on top of, right on top of, uh, sand, essentially, no gravel below, so.
Okay.
Also, I guess bring me to the next side of things, construction plans. Um, so again, this year, we have a very, very robust construction season planned. Um, again, like we've talked about in the past, largest construction, uh, our largest construction season that, uh, we know about that in construction and in, in county history. So we got nine projects plus, uh, our maintenance overlay, so that'd be ten total. About two hundred and ten plan sheets. Um, it's, uh, just construction-wise, that's thirty-four miles for construction and then another additional six, then we'll be doing overlays on the maintenance side. Um, we're looking at, um, total one hundred and sixty thousand tons of mix going down.
Cool.
Um, so, yeah, and all done here with county staff. And obviously, we're, we're short a few staff members. I just found out yesterday, or last week, I had another tech resign. Um, so we're down to one tech out of three. Um, but, uh, I'm pushing forward as hard as I can with these. They have been submitted. The state aid plan sets have been submitted to state aid as of February twenty-fourth. Uh, so before I left, I just was on the phone today with state aid. They have submitted, we have one fully planned set approved. They have submitted comments back on two. Um, and we have worked out those, and I just have to resubmit them and sign them, and then we're waiting to hear back from Three. Autumn, he's hoping today that we'll get those comments back today. Um, so I anticipate advertising, uh, next Monday or Tuesday. And opening bids to follow the state statute would be opening bids on either April sixth or April seventh. I'll let you know for sure what day and what time. You're more than welcome to come during the bid opening. It's, uh, it's kinda fun opening these bids and, and just seeing how, how they all come in, um, so. Yeah, um, so yeah, I'm just working on reviewing the two county projects that are left, uh, putting, compiling the proposal, which is another about one hundred and fifty to two hundred page document. Um, and so every page I have to sign, um, so it's, it's a lot of work. Um, so I would, I thank my techs that have been working hard on that, um, as well as, I do have a temporary tech that's been helping us out that used to work for the highway department years past, um, and so that's been really good, um, so.
Mark, how, how are we, uh, in the food chain for bidding right now? Are, are we gonna run into people with full slates that aren't gonna be able to bid or anything?
No, actually, I've been hearing, uh, I've been hearing that, uh, local contractors are hungry.
Okay, good.
Um, that's what I've been hearing. I know Morrison County opened two bids already. And Anderson Brothers got, or my understanding, got the low bid. Well, thing with Anderson Brothers, we haven't received a bid from them since twenty eighteen, I wanna say. Um, and they, they more stick up in the Morrison, more Crow Wing County area. So I've heard one from one contractor that, uh, they're really looking for, really looking for work, that, so.
Emmer's did come in, what, one, one point three percent underestimated cost, I believe?
Yeah, I was told actually that, well, they had two bids. One was a federal job and one was a non-federal. Um, the federal one came in right at engineer's estimate, but the, the non-federal, I wanna say they, there was like a half million under, under their, under their bid, their engineer's estimate. It's really a challenging time with the engineers' es, you know, getting the engineers' estimate accurate. Um, because prices have gone up, but now we're finding, you know, oil's kinda leveled off for the time being. Um, so, yeah, I, I think I'm optimistic on the competitive side for these bids, I, you know, so.
I always look at it pretty good. If somebody outside of, uh, Knife River gets anything in Morrison County, they've done pretty well, because, you know, they're in the back door in Little Falls and.
Sure.
They just.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Uh, Mark, so the bid opening, is that in your office, highway department?
Correct, yep, we have it in the break room.
And who's usually all there on bid opening?
Um, it's usually me. I mean, you know, Chris would obviously be there, lots, sometimes the techs, they work on the plans, they're present. Um, and then the contractors that submit bids. So like this one, I mean, it's mainly pavement-heavy, so the prime contractor's gonna be paving company, most likely. Um, you might have some subcontractors that had submitted to, like in this case, we're replacing a lot of culverts. Uh, so you may have some dirt contractors, uh, there to see the outcome.
Okay. One more question, Mark. Hypothetically, if, if some of these numbers came in higher than budget and everything like that, would we have the opportunity to look at pushing it a year, knowing that the money's still there, but pushing it a year?
Um, I was planning on was bidding it as it, everything together as it is in the five-year plan.
Yep.
Um, it would have to be a conversation, I guess, at, at that point, after a ward or, uh, you know, maybe during. If they did come in higher, we are estimating that they are, we are gonna be high, um, right now. Higher than what we said on the five-year road plan.
Okay.
Um, the five-year road plan just takes history. We just usually use history of types of projects per mile. Right now, we're, we're estimating about, we're gonna be about two million over.
Really?
Uh, so that would be, well, how we can, how we can handle that, and that would be a decision at that point, I guess, to see what actually the, the bids come in at is about a million of state aid. What we can do with that is we can do an, a resolution to advance. Um, we would get that money this year, but we would be one million less next year. And the same thing, we're looking at loss, so it'll be about a million under, or in the hole on, on the local option sales tax. Um, but, you know, potentially, these, um, bids could come in under, or closer to that. Um, I guess I'm proceeding to move forward with bidding as we've, we've got it, so, um, and we'll see how that comes in.
Just like a grant, it's hurry up, wait and see.
Right. The local option sales tax, you know, we got some money in there that needs to be, there needs to be a balance in there, because I can see the County Road One project for economic development. Um, the twenty-five percent that was based for tarring non-paved roads, we can't touch that. That's gotta be set in there for.
The directed roads.
For the direct of what, we have directions in that local option sales tax, and we cannot venture outside of them. The directions what the county board many years ago give when we, when we went to the voters for that. And so we have to watch that really close, that we don't, you know, if we run a deficit, they're gonna be wondering why. So, I would watch that one really close.
Yeah, I know Chris's, uh, itemized, you know, those that's used on Casat, um, roads, county roads. And then economic, economic development roads, and the resolution does state which roads and, and estimated cost for those roads.
No, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, I, that's.
Commissioner Pope.
I mean, I would not be in favor of running the local option sales tax to a deficit right now. Maybe we'll have to figure out something else or cut a couple of projects, one of the two.
Can we get an update on that, maybe in a, next month, on the local option?
Yeah, we can give a, an update on that.
And the other part is, you know, we've been doing way more than we anticipated when we did the five-year plan. So, you know, I think we've estimated one point nine million, and we've been at two point seven million or whatever. So somewhere's in there, we got an extra eight hundred thousand bucks, and if we're running a deficit, that means we've used beyond and above what we should be using.
Yeah, it's just doing projects sooner than what was anticipated.
Yeah.
And I, my, my other question, Mr. Chair is how's the budget taking a pretty good hit with all the snow that we're doing?
Yeah, I think.
What budget, right?
Yeah, um, yeah, I know salt is uh, is up there. I think it's close already to our budget amount for the year.
Wow, well, is what it is.
We've had a few years that we're under. So.
It's either that or I guess you don't salt anymore, but I think we won't do that.
I think your phone rings enough. We don't need to do something like that.
No, no, that probably would.
Sure, I just figured I'd, if we got a little bit, I can just kind of show you a little bit of, um, I figure this month I'll show you a little bit um, on the design side of things, kind of what goes in. I mean, these projects we're doing this year are a little more simple. As they don't, they're not really disturbing um, a lot uh, outside the footprint and outside the culverts, but uh, what kind of goes into a plan set, we got the survey aspect. Uh, you can all see that, right?
Yeah.
I think, okay. Um, so that's our, our technicians going out there and surveying uh, the road. So essentially everything from breakpoint to breakpoint, you know, where, where it goes down the in slope to pavement, to a gravel shoulder, to the center line. They're also going out there and collecting all the culvert data. Um, we, we grab all that especially for replacing culverts. I mean, obviously we, we don't do that if, maybe if we're just doing a mill and overlay at that point. Another thing we have a random challenge this year is utilities on our plan sheets. We sh- we're required to show our utilities when we're excavating. Um, we've spent a good month and a half trying to, after these locators, trying to get things located so we can show them on our plans. It's been a back and forth, very frustrating aspect um, of, of our job. Um, and uh, we've been uh, talking to facility owners, we've been talking to the locating companies, we've been uh, I even had, uh, at my engineer's conference, I met with uh, the person in charge of uh, uh, pipeline safety and, and, and told them our challenges. Um, I suppose they're aware of these. They've been happening not just in our area, uh, all over the state and they've met with some of these locators and told me to pick up their game, my, you know, from my understanding. So, um, all that stuff kind of goes in there into the plans and then from there, we have the environmental phase. The nice part about the environmental phase in these projects are not too difficult. Um, you know, we have to look at if we're gonna, if we're gonna do anything, widen approaches or anything like that. We have to look at wetlands. If it's a federal job, it's a whole nother process. We have to go through cultural resources. We have to go through threatened endangered species. Um, there's so many acts and different environmental documents you have to put together for that. Um, so as we work on that, we also work on design. So that includes uh, figuring out alignment for the road. Um, and then from there, um, all the plan sheets, all the um, quantities and all that, and then working in CAD. Um, so we work in that. And then from there, once we have all our plan sheets designed, we work on our engineer's estimate and then a proposal and then we bid the project. But just to kind of show you a little bit what our plans do look like, um, Cassa four, which we're doing this year, it's been fully approved. Um, so again, from one to, to three, we have thirty-two pages of plan, plan sheets that have to be put together. Um, so this is just our cover sheet, shows everything about it, the length, all the data, um, the ESLS, uh, truck traffic, you know, that's going on at that uh, single axle loads that are, are roadways experiencing. We've got all our quantities. These are all our estimated quantities for one job that we have to put together for the whole project. All our specific plan notes, um, that we uh, we add, which is addition to what the Minnesota Department of Transportation's standard specifications, which we reference here. That's a one thousand page document that's referenced in our plans and our contract. Um, that each of these bid items, if you look up one oh four, you can find what's all included in that specific bid item in that spec book. And then these are additional notes for the contractor to be aware of. Um, we do these tabulations. All these tabulations are put together to figure out our total. So they're, um, yeah, tabulation essentially we use those quantities to bring them into our, in our statement of estimated quantities. Um, here's a tabulation just for all our entrances on Cassa four. It tells us our location, what type of entrance it is, what size of culvert there is, what we're removing, what we're putting on, putting back, replacing. So it kind of goes down the line, our typical sections of what's existing, what we're gonna do for reclaiming, and then our proposed typical sections. And then from there, just standard details that we have, and then our plan drawings. These are all, it's essentially showing at each location where what we're doing, what's to remain, where the culverts are. You'll notice the utilities are all drawn on here. Um, that's what I was talking about earlier, getting those shots out in the field and everything located so we can show that on our plan sheets. Um, specifically, you can kind of, there's the legend for that. Trying to get down here to the bottom. And then, you know, our, what we're doing at each culvert, it tells us what's, what type of entrance it is, where it's located. Um, you know, uh, the size of culvert, diameter, the length, the inverts. Um, so we have all that information. And the nice part is once we get done with construction, we go back and we shoot all those culverts. And then we have the as constructed um, invert elevations. And so that's really key to know in the future, to have all that information. Um, sometimes we get landowners that say that, oh, the frost have heaved, has heaved my cul- our culvert. Well, now we have data to say, yes, it did, or no, it did not. So, um, so I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. I mean, these are just the plans. There's just, there's a lot on them. There's a lot to check. There's a lot to include, especially when you're dealing with culverts. Um, just more details, our stormwater pollution, pollution, poller prevention plan. Um, it is a maintenance project, so um, we don't actually have to pull a permit for that on these, but um, but we do want um, our contractors to be um, environmentally um, good stewards. Uh, details for our erosion control devices and then our traffic control plan, so.
Mark, quick question. When you put those engineer quantities down and everything, I assume that it's still up to the contractor to make sure that your quantities are correct. They're not bidding yours and if you're wrong, then it would be a change order.
So, yeah, so what Minnesota, Minnesota specs have, if it's considered a major bid item and it deviates, I believe it's, I wanna say twenty, more than twenty-five percent or fifty percent from our estimated quantity, uh, they may have, uh,
Legal.
Yeah, to come back. Not, not, not in every case. Um, so the, the spec book kind of specifies all that information, but um, we try to be really close. That's why I really keen and look really closely at these, because we wanna be close and we wanna be accurate.
Mr. Chair.
Sometimes there is a additional work that we did not foresee when that was, when we put this together.
So, Mark, on, you, you said in the beginning that you can, you can determine truck traffic?
Oh, yeah, let me uh, show you this. Um, um, so this is on the design side. Here's what we do. This is the, to figure out what pavement section we need. Um, these are the, all the documents we have to submit to state aid. This is the engineer's estimate. This is the state plan review checklist that we have to check off in every plan set that we submit, things that we have to do and we have to include on our plans. So that's a ten-page document itself. Um, this is just a lab service request, but we use this calculator. It's called an ESL calculator. So that's equivalent, single axle load. That's what ESL stands for. And so we plug in data. We have historical data from Mindon that has our truck, our, our vehicle percentage, our ADT, annual daily trips. Um, and so we plug that in and what it does is it gives us a linear projection of what it is when we intend to reconstruct the road or recondition the road. Um, and so this case, uh, it was saying that we would be eighteen hundred vehicles a day, although we did do a traffic count last year and it was closer to sixteen hundred, but in twenty years, we do a twenty-year pavement design for a ten-ton road. It's saying that we're gonna have uh, close to twenty-seven hundred vehicles a day, currently against sixteen hundred. So we're looking at nine hundred in, uh, uh, vehicles per day. So the bottom is, so that's a, that's a two point three five percent growth rate. I think Mindon right now is saying our average road, Cassa roads, they're, I think averaging a one point, I wanna say two. So that's a significant amount of growth. Um, that's based upon doing tra- traffic counts. They do traffic counts every so many years. They put the tubes up on our roads. We do have our own traffic counter, so we like to do that on ourselves, because like this is our, by ourselves too, to verify, because twenty nineteen data, that's right now, when we started designing the plans, that's already uh, three years old, so, and now close to four years old. So on the truck side, that's what this vehicle type is. These are all different uh, trucks. Um, and what they're typically on a road with this volume would have. You can see it has percentages. So essentially it's saying that there's a nine point one one percent uh, truck traffic in this road. How we verify on our end, our radar gun actually delineates between um, essentially a small vehicle and a large vehicle and we we do compare that number to see if it's, if it's close, because we don't want to um, have less, you know, underestimate the ESLS and then in twenty years it's beat up. Um, so it's all in projection. So from that there, this, this calculator then estimates how many ESLS for a twenty-year linear growth, is it saying seven hundred and nineteen? I usually average, I round up to the nearest uh, uh, fifty thousand ESLS. So from there, we take that number. So I don't know if that answers your questions on the truck traffic.
Well, yes and no. Got confused. I'm just debating if you drive or take a look at uh, county road seventy-eight between county road two
Yeah.
and county road thirteen, you know, that's the longest portion of seventy-eight that's been reconstruction. And that is, that is a huge truck alley. And that road is really taken a beating. Uh, you know, I don't know if you, if we need to look at that as something we need to try to fix it or something before it's totally gone, you know, and the asphalt's totally gone in there. But if you drive that, someday just go drive it and see. And when you talk to people on there, they'll tell you that from six in the morning till nine at night, there's one company that's on that road all the time. And it, you know, and they're a big company here and that road is really catching them, catching a lot of beat.
Yeah, and for those reconstructions, they're challenging to figure out, yeah, and to estimate how much traffic and how much is.
But there's no real say to, to say how many actual trucks are on that road. We don't have that unless.
We can, uh, I can put out the radar gun this summer and then uh, it'll tell us the large vehicles that would be anything more than essentially a pickup truck.
Right. Yeah, that'd be a good indication because I keep hearing it from different people that live on that road and they just say that the truck traffic is un- unreal.
Yeah, I know there is some rutting on the first section that was built from two down to thirteen, you know, the older section, section, so, yeah.
Oh, you know, maybe we can fix it before it gets to be a big expense.
I don't know if anybody's driven on highway ten from uh, bike culvers to that first uh, exit. That's a way to keep traffic uh, at a slower pace because you, you gotta hang on.
But don't you think they just left that goal because of the reconstruction?
Sure. They, I, they had to. I mean, it is like.
I go around it. I just, I go.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Yeah.
Yep.
It used to be, you'd be able to switch to the other lane and it was somewhat good. Now it's not, it's not good anywhere.
So.
Okay, thanks.
All right, that's all we, we figure that and then from there we take the ESLS from what we're estimating and then there's an R value, it's a residual value of the subgrade. And we plug that all in and it tells us what we need. And from there, we, we figure out what's essentially a gravel equivalency. Um, taking obviously gravel equals one, um, but uh, pavement actually is a two point two five for new pavement. So every inch of asphalt you put down, it's, it equates two point two five inches of, of gravel. So that all kind of goes into um, to that and then last is the proposal and bidding. So we put together these documents for all these standard, or special provisions, uh, wage rates, uh, any requirements that are required as part of the project. So there's quite a few. So that's, this was the three project from last year. That's just a hundred and fifty pages. Um, so all that stuff goes into bidding these projects.
Hopefully we get good bids is all I guess.
Mr. Chair, you know, Mark, thanks for being pretty thorough. I think some of the commissioners up here probably don't understand what's involved.
Yeah.
You know, in this process of how many documents you have to go through and see and read and sign.
Yeah, I think uh, Friday when I left, I think I signed ninety-some plan sheets that day, so. Um.
You got electronic signature?
Yes. But I, every single page I have to take the signature out button and then I have to zoom in, put it, otherwise it's too big. So every single one then zoom back out. Oh, it's, I don't know if it's easier doing that way or if it's just signing by pen, but it's more, it's cleaner, it's cleaner, let's just say it this way. Cause when you get to these plan sheets, then the scaling does not get off, you know, you can take a the hundred, uh, the ten to one scale and it works, so, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Um, the Cassa twenty-five from twenty-three to ninety-five is for next year?
That one, let me double check. Um, that one is in our five-year road plan. I wanna say for twenty twenty-four. Yep, yep, correct.
Okay, so, yeah, and we need to discuss about going to how the whole rest of the road is and get those mailboxes off the road and out. Where, where it's, and then have that paved um, area there by the mailboxes.
You're talking of doing a reconstruction on the road?
Yeah, they're gonna be doing the, on fifty, they're gonna be having a lot of that traffic to put in these panels eventually and the farmers are complaining and it, there's just not room for enough traffic to get through there with the mailboxes right up on the road.
Yeah, and that's something when we talk about the five-year plan, right now we have it in the five-year plan for Cassa twenty-five from Sherburne County to ninety-five, that's ready at the wide shoulders. Uh, we're planning on reclaiming it and paving a six-foot shoulder, but from on ninety-five, trunk highway ninety-five to twenty-three, currently the plan, we were just planning on doing an overlay on that section and uh, not uh, doing um, wide shoulders. I guess that'd have to be something to be discussed at, yeah, committee of the whole, and we talked about the five-year road plan. Um, you know, reclaim is about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, or overlay actually would be, that one, that's what was planned for. So we don't have the width to do a reclaim. Overlay is, we're looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. If you do a reconstruction, we're looking at about a million per mile. Uh, which is a significant, that would be a significant increase.
Maybe two, two and a half miles in that area. All the rest of the road is done with the paved.
That would be an additional two and a half million dollars or two million.
At least two million more.
And then we got construction traffic coming in possibly for those panels and it's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, well, we can, uh,
Yeah, because county fifty is the only.
We can do that at a call.
Yeah, the committee of the whole, I think it'd be good discussion as we look at the five-year. We have obviously next year kind of solidified what we wanna do, but we can look at future years, um, and then the financial aspect of it, so.
Part of, part of county road fifty when, or if these panels do come into play, that, that doesn't fall on the county. That falls on the builder of the panels and everything like that to assist in, in building.
And they, they have reaffirmed us that, correct.
They're gonna do that, address that. Yep, that is correct.
Well, that's, uh, I think that's all I had today. So unless you have any questions.
I am good. Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, you're welcome. The next one I think I will do is, um, I'll do one on when we get to bidding side, on the construction side, all the things that we put together, so.
Maybe if you could send out a, a email when the bids are gonna be opening?
Sure, I can do that, yeah.
I'd like to stop in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner, meeting updates. Who would like to start?
Okay. Let's see.
Commissioner Heinen.
Where were we? Oh, the AMC conference via Zoom. That was a lot of fun, right, everyone?
They need to reschedule that one.
Uh, they was, I'm just gonna tell you, that was a waste of my time.
Yeah.
It was a very, it was a waste of my time. Uh, and then I had another Shack Zoom meeting I had to cut out early uh, with a family issue and I found out I'm elect, I found out I got elected to more to come on that. So I'm an alternate and there's only four of us from the state that are on this elected committee with Shack in public health and all of that.
Okay.
You know, my words will come here in a couple of minutes and I'll bring back to that. Uh, so then we also had our score grant, of course, Monday night. That was a lot of fun. Uh, our cow. And what else did I have?
Don't forget unions.
Oh, yeah, lovely union, yeah. Yep, union negotiations, that was fun. Uh, and actually, where am I? And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Heinen. Thanks, Commissioner Heinen. Commissioner Schlangen.
Um, I have the Transportation Alliance meeting also with the infrastructure and, yeah, and all the taxes they're, they're going to start putting on everything. It's just, yeah, from licenses to, um, for electrical vehicles and for their charging places, and they're trying to find the money for transportation off to people to drive around. And then I have council on aging. Worked on their Title III fundings, and they spent, um, four million for local partners in our fourteen county region. And, anything else? That was it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Pop.
So we had the legislative conference, which I agree, Mr. Heinen, that some of them were, I mean, I didn't even participate in some of the reps that were there because it was so hard. Um, and then one thing I did have that was Zoom, that's actually run pretty well, is we had the AMC board meeting, and they are not, they are not going to reimburse the counties for their, our fees for that, because I guess they had a pretty huge commitment to the Intercontinental that they had to do. So I was a little disappointed. I thought maybe we'd get at least, you know, twenty-five percent of our money back we put in, but.
You look at it, though, you probably, if they give twenty-five percent, they're going to raise their cost twenty-five percent. They're going to get it back.
Yeah, that's true. Um, and then on the twenty-seventh, we had our first, uh, quad county, uh, extension meeting. We have one a year. Um, at the Sterns Service Center out in Wake Park. Um, went pretty well, I guess, um, it looks like, uh, for the most part, Sterns County is pretty well vested in the quad county, and it's making it a lot easier for some of the things to do. Um, all of them spoke about, you know, what they're doing in each of the counties. And then the reconfiguration of the, of the regionals director, directors. And they're going to bring Morrison County into our regional director, which is, uh, Lori Vetsi, and they're going to take out Sibley County, so that she will have full control of what happens. Right now, Morrison County went to the Brainerd office, and it always made it a little bit cumbersome, you know, and when you had to do something, because they were, they were in a different region than ours, so now she'll be, she'll have that total deal. They took one away, which makes sense, and she gave up that one. But all in all, I thought, you know, the extension is, is well, um, well-served in our four-county area, and I think the, the people we got in place are doing a really good job, whether you want to be in horticulture, or master gardeners, or, you know, livestock, or crops, or whatever. Um, they're, they're taking a lot of calls. Um, and then I think, uh, we did have an AMC, um, extension meeting that, uh, Thursday morning. And the Miranda of Agreement is out, and they're kind of giving us a fore, a forewarning that, um, they're going to have to, in order to attract the quality people they want, they're going to have to increase pay, like everything else, you know, so that part. And that was, uh, everything else was pretty much what we've been, what we were at, you know, unions and everything like that, so.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, I will go then. Um, we had our St. Cloud to Foley Fiber meeting. Uh, I think that, that ended up turning out pretty well. We've got, it, it's another thing that is hurry up and wait. We're trying to figure out some direction on, on who can be more partners, who can put in more additional resources. Um, who's gonna, who's gonna maintain it, stuff like that. Uh, we've got a meeting coming up, is it next week?
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, on, on that, so, uh, we got the state involved, we got Mindot involved. Um, uh, City of Foley was there, obviously, uh, Commissioner Johnson and myself, Monty. So that, uh, that, that's a, yeah, a continuing, um, challenge. Obviously, people know the broadband side of things. We're in good shape there. So that, that should be all put in, I believe, because they had to have those in on March sixth, right?
I believe it's the third.
Third, okay.
Broadband, BTP, yeah, yeah.
So, so we should be good there. Uh, we had our solid waste, uh, as Commissioner Heinen said, that went well, uh, a lot of applications. Um, GLT, our cow with the, uh, potential new building. Uh, the more we talk about that, the more excited I get, but the more, uh, scary it is too, so. It's a, it's a big venture, but, uh, you know, you look at what, what, uh, that could do for efficiencies and everything, so. Can, I look forward to continuing those. Um, let's see here, we had, uh, last Friday, Chris and I had a meeting with, uh, Brian Gibson from the APO about, uh, backing projects and everything like that. That was a, uh, um, uh, interesting meeting and, and stuff, and, uh, there will be a lot more to come after this Thursday's APO meeting, so. Needless to say, they are backing our projects now, and they, they've submitted a letter basically going back to, um, Emmer's office and, and, and the, uh, um, the lobbyist, uh, David Church, that we have come to the table with a couple of projects and, and to back them.
Thank you for that. I think it was long overdue, hey?
Yeah, it was, uh, it, we had, we had, we had a, about a forty-five minute meeting with them, and we'll hear more on Thursday, so. Um, obviously, Commissioner Heinen and myself, we've been kind of talking a lot over the last, uh, couple of weeks on the raise grant, and once again, staff, I, I don't, I, we can't say enough on how big of a team effort this is, and, you know, Christine, you, you got in a few months ago and, and, uh, you're learning as it is, and then get thrown into this in a timeframe. Mark, uh, thank you, Monty, all you guys, so Beth. Uh, it means a ton to Commissioner Heinen, because, and myself, because we sit there and go, God, if this doesn't get turned in, this is a bad deal. And we got an opportunity here to really advance Patton County, so. That was all I have.
I did express our thanks to Jack at the City for helping us as a backup plan.
Absolutely.
That made us feel better. We had a backup plan just in case.
Yep. All right, Monty, committees of the whole.
Just a couple. Uh, so you, you said a committee of the whole to meet next with GLT on March the twentieth at eight thirty here in the boardroom. Again, March twentieth at eight thirty here in the boardroom. And just one other thing is, is you're invited by the state auditor to participate in what they're describing as the Main Street Listening Tour Tuesday, March fourteenth, from ten to eleven thirty at St. Cloud State University. I don't have a specific location there. They do ask for registrations, uh, prior. Again, this is the state auditor, Main Street Listening Tour, Tuesday, March fourteenth at ten. Uh, any, uh, interest at this point, and we can register you for it?
I don't know.
What was it again?
Excuse me, when?
She's asking clarification.
It's, it's, it's the, it's the state auditor, uh, I believe her name is Julie, is it La?
La. La.
Yes. Uh, she's traveling around the state, uh, sharing information, getting feedback from local elected officials. I think, or I think sadly, her purpose is to make sure of local, local officials, uh, know about all the dated information that her office provides, or services it provides, and to hear any concerns or issues that you may have as a local elected official. So that's.
No, no specific title to what she's going to talk about, though, huh?
It's not, it's not specific.
No, okay. Sounds like she's going to be listening to people and probably not having a lot of answers.
I think I'll pass.
Maybe it'll be a.
Where, where is this at?
Answer to her later.
Pick up state. I don't have a specific location there, but I would get that too, if you're interested in attending.
Okay, I'll be interested.
So, Commissioner Schlangen, anyone, anyone?
No.
Okay, all right. So that's all we have, sir.
All right.
Do we give motion, Commissioner Concerns?
Oh, motion to set the cow?
Second.
We got a motion and a second to set the cow. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioner Pop.
So you all got this letter from Linda Flanners from Goodhue, and it was addressed to, Commissioner Persky started it. They're going to have a river cleanup, and I, Morrison, or Sterns County is going to support it, I think, in one of their next two meetings, um, from April. They're going to kind of center it around Earth Day. Um, and, um, he was wondering if we wanted to use Bend in the River Park or something, and just put it out there that, you know, people could bring stuff that they pick up along the river and put a dumpster out there or something, is what they're thinking about.
That'd be a good idea, actually.
We could get a score grant. I don't, I don't know if we'll get anybody, I, I mean.
Let's, uh, let's put that on our next board meeting, have Sarah here. If we could do that, to talk about that.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of it. I, it cuts off the access to the river, because mostly it's private land, right? So I guess it'd be private landowners picking up trash along their stretch of the river.
Right, yeah. As long as they're not cleaning out their garages and, oh, yeah.
Put out our dumpster, yeah. We could certainly arrange for our waste hauler to put a dumpster out there for a few days and.
May, and he'll have more to come. He's been coordinating it more than I, I just, he just made a phone call to me the other day.
Yeah, let's try to get a little bit more information. Let's throw this on our board agenda meeting for our next, next meeting with Sarah.
So would I be contacting someone over at Sterns and find out what they're going to do?
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I can talk to Mike, okay.
Yeah.
All right. What, what's the date again that going to be?
Um, it's a wide, I think he's wanted to have it like sometime during the month between,
Okay.
you know, the twenty-first, yeah, and they, he talked about centering it around Earth Day, which I think, yeah.
Yeah, April fifteenth through May fifteenth.
Yeah. Which you can't leave a dumpster out there for a full month.
No, because you know it's going to be.
It'll be full.
Everything, so, yeah, we need to have a conversation about that, get some more, more information.
I'll contact Mike.
Okay.
If they're not going to do nothing, I don't think, you know, because he said they were going to put one in, uh, Sterns County Park on the other side, is what he's hoping to do.
Oh, okay.
So he thought if they had, yeah, if they had one on both sides, maybe, I don't know.
Anything else, Commissioner Pop? Commissioner Heinen, Commissioner Schlangen, Monty?
Yep, we're good.
All right. We're adjourned at ten twenty.